Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It is August 19th, 2024. Our first item of business is the regular meeting Licensing Board minutes from August 5th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Soothing Energy Massage Therapy License Application.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim, Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no more business for the Licensing Board, so I will adjourn.
I would like to call the Order Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval of regular meeting, August 5th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Berquist and Alderman Schmidt. Any additions or deletions? There are none. We have most. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Award Contract 2414 Renovation White Family Cabin, Ridge Run Park. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier this year, we were before the council to request permission to renovate the cabin at Ridge Run Park. Those renovations included installing new doors, window replacement, interior finishes, new electrical upgrades, lighting, exterior improvements, including a new entry portico, wooden deck that would wrap around two sides of the building, siding repairs, painting, and the add alternate was a sink, a kitchen sink with cabinetry, things like that. We currently don't have water inside the building. We went out for bid this spring, bids came back in or came back. We had one bid at that point in time of $150,000 for the base bid. Our pre-bid estimate was $84,000. We came to the common council, requested to reject that bid. The council rejected that bid. The reason why the bid was so high and other contractors weren't bidding on it, we had a March 1st, 2025 deadline to that contract. Contractors are busy. They didn't need the work. The one bid we did receive, they're like, we'll throw a number at it. We get it, great. You know, if they didn't get it, that was fine also. So in June, the common council rejected that bid. We went back out with the exact same contract, the exact same requirements. Everything is the same. We went back out, talked to different contractors to see if anyone would be interested. The only thing we changed was the deadline, the completion date. We didn't put a completion date on there. We let the contractor tell us what can you do? When can you do this work? Everyone's so busy. When can you do this work? So this evening, we are presenting the one bid that we did receive for this project from Sprazzi Carter LLC, a base bid of $93,430 with the add alternate bid of $5,800. Again, this project will be funded by donations. We have one anonymous donor that would fund the entire project. We talked to that donor throughout this entire process, and with these final numbers, they've already committed $5,000 earlier this year to it. They are ready for another financial commitment in September, October, a second one before the end of the year, and then around May 1st, final completion to pay for the entire project. The donor's on board. We are all set to go with this project. We just need permission to award this evening. Thank you.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Alderman Sternig, Alderman Sparts. Are there any questions for Mike? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
My call to order meeting of the Finance Committee this evening. We have three items on our agenda. The first is the approval of the minutes from August 5th, 2024, regular meeting. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer. Thank you for that. The next item is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department. Welcome back.
Thank you. This evening, we are presenting five very impressive donations. The first donation of $10,000 was donated by the Friends of Parks and Recreation for the beach house renovation. This is their third and final installment of their three-year commitment to this project. The second donation of $10,000 was donated by Chapman and Park for the beach house renovations. This is also their third and final installment of the three-year commitment to this project. The third donation this evening of $360 was donated by Riverside Disc Golf Club for Riverside Park Disc Golf Course improvements. The next donation with a value of $1,000 was donated by GFL Environmental for 10 recycling carts to be used at Regular Park during special events. And the last donation this evening with a value of $4,000 was donated by the West Bend Friends of Park and Recreation for lunches provided during the 2024 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for kids. With that donation, I'd like to note that in a three-hour time period, our friends group served over 3,000 meals that morning to the kids or families, et cetera. Yes, we have a $4,000 value this evening before the council for those lunches, but I'd also like to recognize all the hours of volunteers that entire weekend, the prep time, all the effort that goes into preparing for that day and the physical preparation of who wants a roll of 4,000 hot dogs that morning, literally. They're there early, and they're there late, and they were there the night before and things like that. So with that value of $4,000, it's more than just 4,000 hours of lunches. It's hundreds of hours of labor hours from these volunteers and these groups, and we are very, very fortunate as a community to have these donations, all of these donations before us tonight, and committed volunteers that, you know what, they think West Bend's a pretty cool community. I agree. So thank you.
Can I entertain a motion to accept those donations?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions or comments for Mike? John, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add to this. Mike, I want to congratulate your crew here at the city for all of the work that they've gone through to get that number of children and T-shirts and stuff. I mean, that must have been crazy here at City Hall, that number of kids, and the hours that your full-time crew put up for all the stuff that they have to go through, the setup and that on the park and that is fantastic. So compliments to your crew as well. Great job.
John, I appreciate that, and it's definitely a team effort. Again, as I mentioned, the volunteers, our staff. There's a lot of people here tonight on this side of the room that are also involved with that event, many other ones, PD, fire. I couldn't tell you the number of city staff members that are volunteering their time, planning and prepping for that event and during that event. It is definitely a community event, especially when we want to put on an event for 2,500 children, and we have about 10,000 people on our property in about five hours that morning. It's pretty awesome.
Any other comments, questions for Mike?
I'll echo those comments as well, and thank you to the members of city staff, the police, fire, administration, those people who are sitting here as well, who have attended that event and other events, and it truly is a community event, and it doesn't help, doesn't happen without everybody's involvement to pull it off. So thank you to you and your team and everybody involved, and to those who have contributed to these excellent donations. Again, it really gives a sense of the community aspect that we have here in the city of West Bend. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The third item is a resolution accepting a donation from the music band Cherry Pie. And I don't see... Oh, he is hiding over there. I see.
The fire department to protect me.
Yeah, the band Cherry Pie, those of you that have seen them, great little cover band, donated on August 6th, $500 to the police department. So we ask that you accept that, and we will reappropriate it into the Crime Prevention Fund.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions for Matt? Thank you very much to the band Cherry Pie for that excellent donation. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We didn't actually take a vote on the approval of minutes, did we?
No.
All right. I skipped right past that. Going back to the first item, then, can I get a motion to approve? Well, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the August 5th meeting, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening again. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, August 19th, 2024, 6:34 PM. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, state, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes. Notification of the meeting's agenda was made. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting is properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge.
I would like to lead, Mr. Speaker, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our common council tonight with Alderman Allen unable to be with us tonight. Our first item of business is the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes from August 5th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the Common Council Special Meeting Minutes from August 12th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of cool presentations tonight, the first one being the Roots and Branches Beautification Awards. So I'm going to introduce Mike Faulkner from Roots and Branches.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Mike Faulkner, representing Roots and Branches. For those who do not know about Roots and Branches, I'll just read you our mission statement quickly. Our goal is to grow a more beautiful community today and plant seeds of pride and stewardship to improve the natural environment of West Bend tomorrow. Each year, Roots and Branches sponsors a Mayor's Beautification Award in each of the eight Aldermatic districts. So we have judges that are volunteers that go around, that are assigned a district, and they drive or walk, bike, whatever, on every single street in their district, and there's certain criteria that they need to follow, and arrive at someone that they choose in that particular district. And so we have 16 volunteers act as judges, a number of them who are here tonight, and I appreciate all of your efforts, and we thank them for all of their time. You know, it takes a little while to go through that, and every year the district gets alternated. So we always say if they stay for eight years, they will have driven, they've seen every single street in the city of Wisconsin. And some of them I know have been on the committee for more than eight years. So then what happens is those winners are notified, and then we have an evening where the mayor and I and city photographer Jacob head out and present the signs to put in their yards, and I think Joel would agree. It's an evening I certainly look forward to. Every year, we have a lot of fun going around presenting those to those people. So tonight, we're going to introduce and recognize those eight winners in these districts. So when I call your names, if you could please, I think we'll just stand over there, and your alderman will, I'm not sure which way to turn here, your alderman will come over, and Lisa, our director for Roots and Branches, will take your pictures. All right? So District One is Kyle and Diane Polster. District Two is Sandy Schulz, and since Spark is not here tonight, Joel's going to do the honors and get in an extra picture here. District Three is Judith and Doug Meyer. Earlier, Joel mentioned the pizza oven. These are the pizza oven people here. It's on Lincoln Drive. District Four, Amy and Adam Inkman.
And they needed to leave early, so they...
Oh, that's right. They left early. Yeah, their picture was already taken. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot about that. Our District Five winner was Tom and Sue Cameron, who I do not believe are here, correct? All right. District Six. District Six is Randy and Deb Eller. District Seven is Mary Beth and Rick Waters, who are not able to attend this evening, believe. So they're District Seven winners.
Best pizza in town.
And District Eight is John and Barb Ranky. So congratulations to all of the Mayor's Beautification Award Residence Winners for this year, and appreciate all your efforts. I'd like to also thank the board members who were able to be here tonight, and the judges as well. The other half of our evening is the Business Beautification Awards, which we started a few years back. We have three different districts that are recognized. One of them is the Historic Barton Business Association, one of them is the Bid District, and the other one is the City of West Bend at Large District. So this year, one group or person that could not be here tonight was the Porters, who said they were sorry they couldn't attend, but they have what used to be Downtown Dental, right, Downtown Dental, which is now going to be named 309 Arts Studio, and they are turning that into a different studio. So in the future, that's what their stone will say, and they are very excited to do that. And they were not able to attend tonight, like I said. The other two winners are here, and the first one is Revive Salon Studios, Rhiannon Klotz and Debbie Hall. They would come up, please. Congratulations. We had by far the most nominations, call-ins for the business awards this year than we ever have, so it's been very nice, and there seems to be more and more businesses around town. They're taking the time to spruce up their places, and it's certainly appreciated. It makes everything look nice. And our third business award is from the Barton District, and it's Do Your Hair Justice. I think it's upside down, Justice. We'd also like to thank West Bend Insurance Company for sponsoring our business award each and every year. So I thank you for the opportunity, Mayor and the council, to present this each evening, or this evening each year, and thank you for all of you that were able to come tonight and be recognized, and we applaud your efforts and appreciate everything you do for the city. So thank you very much.
On behalf of all of us, congratulations, and thank you for making West Bend beautiful. Thank you for Roots and Branches. If you haven't seen some of the Roots and Branches planters around town, make sure you go check them out. I was telling Donna, my wife and I walked by the old hospital, Oak Evergreen Highland View, and there's some just amazing planters in the roads over there, and then, of course, planters downtown as well. So thank you for all you do, and congratulations to all of you. We have one more presentation tonight, and I would like to ask you all to stay if you don't mind. This won't take long, but this is a young man who is going to be a firefighter EMT working for us, and this is kind of a neat ceremony. So I would like to ask you to stay if you don't mind, and invite our chief up, and we'll get Grant Domros pinned here tonight.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to come and introduce one of our newest firefighters. We typically done a little bit different of the ceremony in the past. After some internal conversations, we decided to change it up a little bit from here on out. So tonight, we're going to take the opportunity to introduce our newest firefighter, administer the oath of office, have him have an opportunity to introduce himself to all of you, and then at the end of his probationary period, which for a firefighter, City of West Bend is 18 months, we'll have a more formal badge pinning ceremony, probably in the fire station, and embrace some more of the firefighter traditions. But for this evening, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome up Deputy Chief Bysel and firefighter Domros. Deputy Chief Bysel will provide a little bit of background and introduction to our newest firefighter.
Good evening. Grant was hired on June 24th. He served in the United States Air Force from February of 2019 until February of 2023. His primary specialty was fire protection journeyman. He served in Kuwait from February 2nd, 2021, to August 7th, 2021, at an airbase during his deployment in support of Operation Inherent Resolve. He achieved awards for Air Force Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Resolve, I'm sorry, National Defense Service Medal, Inherent Resolve Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Armed Forces Service Medal, Air and Space Longevity Award, and Air and Space Training Ribbon. Grant recently completed his paramedic training in June. He is still in the process of completing his National Registry Licensing. Grant, will you please introduce who's with you tonight?
My wife and me with me, as well as my mother-in-law Sarah.
She's over here.
So thank you for your service.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Grant Domros.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
As firefighter EMT?
As firefighter EMT.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County?
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties?
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability?
Of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to our country, Grant, and to your future service here in our city of West Bend. As you can see, the kind of caliber of folks that we bring into our fire department. I appreciate you all staying for that. Congratulations. Thank you, men and women, for being here. We do have a little bit of business to conduct here at our common council meeting. It is fun and exciting, but you won't hurt our feelings if you need to get up and leave. So now would be the time to do that.
It's called networking, Brett.
Who's bringing the beer?
Network to your beautification award winner.
All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. Our consent agenda has the four items that were just taken up in committee. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion on our consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first item for consideration tonight is a review of the Income Continuation Insurance Benefit Plan. That's item number seven. We also need to act on this item tonight, so item number 13 is going to be next. So item seven is Jess is going to introduce the topic, and then we can act on it.
Sure. Included in your packet is information about the income continuation insurance. First of all, just want to thank our new insurance broker, USI, for making us aware of this program. It's free to the city of West Bend, and it's also free to our employees. So it's a really great opportunity for us to get involved in the Wisconsin retirement system currently is what covers the cost of the program. It essentially is if an employee becomes disabled at some point during their time here, they are able to take part in ICI 30 days after that time, and it helps cover up to 75% of their salary, up to $125,000. So this is a really great program to help keep our employees paid during a time of need. It is also able to be used in conjunction with our short-term disability plan that runs, you know, between that shorter time, under 30 days, so there's not a big gap period. It would also help in other ways outside of disability, but with, for example, maternity leave, it provides some benefits there as well, a couple extra weeks of perhaps paid disability time. So it's an exciting program that we hope to incorporate starting on January 1st. If the program for some reason ends up having a cost in the long-term future, we're able to get out of it at any time as well, so.
So item number 13 is the resolution for inclusion under this income insurance continuation plan. I'll look for a motion, and then we can open discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion on this? Go ahead, John.
I noticed that it was on a fee holiday at this point. Any idea how long that's going to last, or, because that'll be when the cost comes in after that expires?
Right. So right now, I don't know... Right. So, right now, I don't know when that will be, but definitely we've been told that this next year is covered. So, if it does come off of the holiday, then we would know that in advance and we could put our notice in 90 days in advance of that time if we didn't want to pay for it. This will replace essentially our existing long-term disability plan where our employees have to pay for that separately from, on their own.
Has there been any comparison for rates as far as what we're currently paying for our long-term as opposed to what this would be after the holiday is over? Or, that's all is going to be market dependent at that time?
So, we don't know what that looks like after the holiday is over or when that would be even. It's really doing well.
So, I would just add that our broker made it sound like this was going to be sometimes. It's not like it's a 12-month, six-month holiday. It's going to be a holiday that they anticipate for several years.
So, it'll come before us again?
It would have to come before you if we were going to move on, but it's definitely a benefit to our employees that we want to put before them. And I'm sure we just learned about this. Other municipalities are moving in this direction too, Jess and I just found that out.
Yep.
You'll see if you're a government person that scours other agendas, you're going to start to see this on other municipal agendas as well for their employees.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess. Our next few items here pertain to some work that was done at the plan commission. And so, I'll invite Jim Renke to come walk us through those.
Sure. Thank you. So, the first item, we're asking for approval of an ordinance for a land use change up on River Drive. It was a half-acre parcel. It's actually located north of the old Barton School Site. That was just done a few years ago. Asking a change of land use from multifamily to two-family residential for that.
Motion to approve. Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Sparts. Any questions?
Correct me if I'm wrong, that is a two-family right now?
No, actually what happened is that property is vacant right now. It used to be a six-family building in there, but due to the site constraints, they're asking for duplex there just because that site is extremely tight with grade changes, easements and whatnot on there.
Okay. And I did have some concerns from constituents as to what's going up there eventually in the structure and the easements and the actual footprint?
Yeah, we don't have anything. That would happen once we get a building permit application, but we're actually downzoning this. So, before it was multifamily, now we're going to a duplex or a side-by-side. So, the footprint's going to be considerably smaller.
I would personally like to see what they're proposing before I would vote for this just because of my, the concerns of the people in the area, some of my constituents.
Just trying to think if we have the right. I don't know if we have the right to do that because of the actual zoning district. I don't think we have things set up in our code unless Ian, maybe help with that. Typically, a multifamily development would just go to plan commission where a two-family gets reviewed by city staff along with single-family. I don't know if we have provisions that do that or not.
I mean, you can request the information, but like what you're saying, you're saying that if this is approved, it's not going to come before plan commission at all?
Correct. It would not come to plan commission or council.
Correct. Correct. It would just be a building permit that would be issued under the, but I think what is being requested is just some more information about what they're looking to do at this in order, you know, what they're looking to develop here just for the information purposes to address the concern.
Correct. And we could forward that over once we get an application.
I mean, if we have to table this until we get that information? You would have to move to postpone. I'd like to make that motion.
Consideration. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? If there is no second, then your motion fails. I will say, Alderman Schmidt, I believe the constituent maybe that you're talking about was at plan commission and asked the question of who owns the property? And that was, that's something that we can even help the constituents look on the tax records site. My hope, I guess, when we answered it that way at plan commission was that maybe the owner of the property would talk to this constituent and they could take care of kind of answering questions, but I don't know if that has happened.
It has not.
Okay.
Because I talked to the constituent and he was verbally told by the developer that he would receive that information, at least a conceptual drawing of what was going to be proposed, and he did not receive that. So, that's the concern that he has. He wants to know a little bit more about what's going on. And I, out of fairness to him, he's going to be a neighbor and he's going to be stuck next door to him. So.
Ian, go ahead.
For both the comprehensive plan and for zoning, for the zoning amendment that are coming up, the issue is typically less what is specifically being proposed and more what type of uses are in the surrounding properties, what type of uses would be available in the proposed zoning. Because even if the, even if he came forward with a plan today, it doesn't mean that's what ultimately is going to be developed there. And so, you know, if you look at the, you see in the memo that it's, you know, there's statements such as staff has reviewed the surrounding land uses and feels that two-family residential use could be a compatible use inconsistent with the surround, existing surrounding uses. That's the concern, much less the specific proposal. In fact, with a lot of these, we can't address specific proposals because then we get into things like spot zoning. So, it's really about, does this fit with surrounding uses? Oh, zoning this business in the middle of a neighborhood doesn't make sense because it's residential all around. Doesn't matter what the business that's being proposed is because once that zoning is assigned, they have the right to do what the uses are under there. So, while I understand the neighbor wanting to know what's going next door, the, this is a much more like, you know, the comprehensive plan is the 30,000 over, you know, foot overview and the zoning is the 10,000 foot overview and then you get down into the specifics. So. And that would come before us so we could. Well, that's what this is. Comprehensive plan is, you know, what is the intended land use there? And in the broad categories and then zoning is getting more into the, which is the next one, is getting more into the specifics about what the actual use is, what the density is, what the setbacks are for those proposed uses, that type of stuff. But again, it's not a, it doesn't, it's kind of like, it's kind of like when we grant a, you know, operator's license. They may be working at, you know, QuickTrip right now, but that operator's license is good elsewhere. Like, just because this is the proposal on the table today, doesn't mean that that developer doesn't change his mind and do something different or go belly up and sell to somebody else. I mean, it's, you know, you're setting the broad category with this, not approving a specific development. I'm just saying the permitting is afterwards, right? Correct. Correct. And, you know, depending on what it is, it may or may not come before you. Again, if it's just a single-family home or a duplex, those don't get approved here.
Any more questions? We do have a motion and a second to approve. I'll call the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Motion carries six to one. We'll move on to the next item, which is the same piece of property and this is the zoning. So, Jim, take it away.
Correct. So, this is the actual zoning that we're requesting to establish. We're looking to go from the RM4 multifamily residential to the RD2 two-family residential. Again, this is actually a downzoning from what was originally approved for that area. And it is consistent with the two duplexes to the north that are there and a transition from the multifamily to the south and also transition from the single-family to the west.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Butchlick. Comments, questions, discussion? See, go ahead.
Just a comment that, and this applies to the previous action item we took as well is that this did become, did come before the plan commission at the public hearing that was held on the second. So, there was opportunity for any resident to come voice concerns as well as voice concerns at any point before or after that after notice was given with city staff. And at that meeting, there were not any significant concerns raised during that public hearing. And it's my understanding that city staff has not received any significant.
All that we received during the public hearing or notice portion was just general inquiry. There was nothing, anyone objecting to the uses or the change.
Thank you.
So, before this developer builds anything on this lot, they would apply for permits through the city?
Correct.
And you would see drawings?
Correct. So, our process for a single-family and two-family is they get submitted to our building inspection office. They do a plan review on the actual building for compliance. Our office actually does a review of the platte survey to make sure it complies with setbacks and height restrictions and whatnot for that along with grading requirements.
And maybe this developer just hasn't gotten to that point yet that you've seen.
And they may not have. Right now, a lot of the times, what they do is they try to lay the groundwork down. So, they look, work at the land use level first and then down to the zoning level before proceeding with full construction plans.
When you receive those plans, are they public, are they, are they open, are they public domain, I guess? I mean, could Alderman Schmidt come in and say, you know, Jim, I want to see these plans and I'm going to bring this constituent with me and we want to see them?
As soon as they apply with application and fee, it becomes public record. So, anyone could take it, anyone could take it and review the plans or look at them. Yes.
I would be willing to do that with a constituent.
Yep.
What recourse would that constituent have being the next-door neighbor in a situation like that?
Unless it did not be.
As long as the plans are compliant with the zoning code, it's, if it's a permitted use, you can, and you're in compliance with the code, it's essentially a right. So, unless there's. So, in other words, it'd be a moot point for me to go along with the constituent to address it at that point?
There's, as long as it meets the code, there's probably not much that can be changed, but I would think that maybe it would satisfy the constituent just to know what's going to be built.
Just so you know, his concern is there's a fire there. It's up higher and he's concerned about, and his house was damaged. His property was damaged during that fire. And so, he was concerned that if something was built a lot higher than what was there or the same, same height or elevation, that it could cause problems with his property again. If something, if lightning could, would strike twice, so to speak.
Yep.
Right?
John?
I'm familiar with that situation too. And I know the owner was at the public hearing, did comment. He is concerned, I'm sure, with the encroachment with his property. The problem that they had with the building that was on the property was it was too big for the property site and that's why he had the damage. It was too close to his house.
Under difference.
With the old zoning.
Right.
And that's why going with this new zoning should shrink that down a little bit. I also did hear something about solar panels that he was concerned about. So, there is something there. My suggestion to him would be to try to contact the developer and get to it before some of his plans. Yep.
Any other comments, questions, Ian?
And to clarify, when the property is, when the building is destroyed that way, you have to come into compliance with the current zoning. So, they can't build with the old footprint. I was going to ask about that, but Alderman Sparts addressed it specifically, which is it was with the old setbacks. The setbacks weren't sufficient for the fire break. That's one of the major reasons setbacks exist is to make sure that if I have a fire, I don't affect my neighbor in an ideal situation. Obviously, there's still exceptions to that, but if they, if they were non-compliant previously, they can't build in that same footprint at this stage.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to another comprehensive plan and a rezoning for 9.64 acres located at 2320 Sylvan Way. Jim?
Thank you. So, this land use change, it's kind of a cleanup from what we've had out in the area. This used to be part of the old Bob Fish development out there. The northern third of the property was in our land use plan is commercial. And the southern two-thirds was industrial in our land use plan. So, we're asking consideration to clean up that area. They took it and did a certified survey map around 2021, which rearranged the property lines. This just happens to be an old remnant area for the previous land use as, as car dealership or commercial. So, we're asking consideration for the ordinance to be passed to modify the land use plan to industrial, make it consistent with the rest of the property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jim, our last item.
The last one is, this is a follow-up for the actual zoning. The property was zoned before, which is for car, commercial uses for car dealerships and whatnot. We're asking to change that to the M3 industrial park zoning. The use that is out there right now conforms to that use also. And they're looking to actually expand their use for their existing shop and then also some future use to the south.
Motion to approve. Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Jim, it's my understanding item number 12 has already been taken care of.
Yes, absolutely. Back in March, we did approve a resolution accepting the right-of-way for sand drive. So, this would have been a duplication. So, we actually do not need action on that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's item number 12. We've already done item number 13. Item 14, Ian, I'll turn it over to you. This is a resolution authorizing appropriations for airport revenue.
So, this is very straightforward. The, with the elimination of personal property taxes from the tax roll, we have created tax parcels for all of the airport hangers. Moving forward, when people transfer those hangers, they are required to essentially do a deed. It's called a, it's called a billing fixtures and improvements document. Along with that comes the full deed process of doing a transfer return. And if it's a sale, paying a transfer fee as with any other real estate. So, because of that, and to make sure that our books are clear, I would essentially be drafting the deed for that and billing out the time since it's kind of outside of the normal city attorney duties. And then also billing recording fees and transfer fees as they would apply as expense recovery. So, all this does is create a revenue and expense account that will match up. It's going to be a, you know, revenue in, revenue out situation. It's not really, it's just a zero line item or a zero net entry. So, this is just creating those two accounts.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Sternig. Any questions for Ian on this one? Alderman Sparts and Alderman Berquist. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. The Airport Commission report.
Okay, we met on August 5th in City Hall here. We approved our minutes. We reviewed the budget for the airport, which is self-sufficient and a different, not on the tax levy from what I understand. It's a separate budget. But the committee approved that and that will be presented to council with the budget. Hangar lease rates were discussed. There was a, I don't have the rates on them, but there was some discrepancies. The business rates were less than the private rates for the rentals of the hangers. And it was decided to bring those even. And so, those were approved. And they are still compared, low compared to the surrounding areas. Unfortunately, there isn't many open ones. And it's at 17 cents per square foot. They had discussion on the possible recommendations for an EAA event for next year. We tried to, talked about one earlier this spring to try to get one for this year, but it just was too late and the planning was too long. So, we are working with the EAA chapter to see what we can do for next year. So we are working with the EAA chapter to see what we can do for next year and we'll start and bring in people to the airport and, and get them up to Oshkosh for the event. There is, there is a market for that, and we think West Bend Airport can handle about 150 planes. So there may be some things coming before the council as far as allowing camping for special events and that kind of stuff. Airport manager gave his report. Maintenance alter is ongoing. There's runway light maintenance, beacon replacements, weed spraying, repair of electrical gates. The AWAS, which I learned is the weather system, and you can call in, you can, if you have the phone number, you can actually call into it. I don't have the phone number, so I can't pass that along, but if anybody wants it, let me know, I'll see what I can do to get it for you. And then they're looking for a new windsock next year, next week to be replaced because the other one's in tatters. And the next meeting will be in September. So that was the Airport Commission.
Thank you. Any questions about the airport? We'll move on to our bid board meeting. Jay's going to take this one.
The bid board addressed three things of note. They did have some bids for the Christmas decorations, the setting up and tearing down of Christmas. So we found a vendor, a new vendor that they're going to go with. I'm pretty excited to actually lower the costs of installing Christmas decorations. I know it seems early to talk about that, but West Bend does Christmas in a big way, so no time like the present. They had initial budget discussions. That budget comes before you to approve at a future meeting. They will have another chance at it at their next meeting and then it'll come before you. And then lastly, they had an update from Scott, from Scott's Landscaping. He provided an update for the bid board on, on watering and how that has been going to date. And that's it.
Thank you. Plan Commission.
Okay, Plan Commission, we met on, it was August 6th. I'm sorry, couldn't find the date on the, on the agenda here. We approved the plan amendments for the multifamily that we just discussed earlier. We also did the zoning approval for that, and that was forwarded to the council. We did the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning for the land on Sylvan Way that we just approved. That we, as, we received a concept plan for 33 acres of land for residential development proposal at Daisy Drive in Clearview. That was the property that we looked at back in July, I think it was, that we rejected and they came through with a different concept approval for our plan discussion, and that will be coming back. They wanted to feel the, the commission ought to see if that was the right, what they were, we were looking for, and they came back with a fairly nice plan, we thought, and I think it was pretty much given a go-ahead. So we'll probably be seeing that, we should be seeing that again. We had site plans, we had a request for an approval for digitized artwork on the back of the Historic Theater of the bend, which will add a little color back there on the, on her back wall along the river. It looks very, it looks very nice. They'll have a painting by a local artist or state artist. I don't remember his name, unfortunately, I didn't write it down. We had some, a request for some architectural changes at the Vortex Pickleball Club, which is the old Marshall's, the backside of it. And actually, I drove by there just last week and they had it colored, like within a couple of days, painted up into the corporate colors. It looked really nice. And they, they did a new concept with the windows where they, they put an applique over the windows that you can see out of, but you can't see in. It, it's more of a sun, sun shield. So they, and they also agreed that when they leave, that we'll all go back to the natural colors that are out there. There was a request for, that was the, there were two requests for that. That was for the painting of the walls and for the applique at a window, and that was it. We were adjourned.
Thank you. Deer Management Committee.
Uh, yeah. We are waiting for fall when the Wildlife Services will be conducting another unmanned aerial vehicle survey and to estimate the deer population within all the parks and properties that they've been doing for us for the past five, for the past seven, eight years. And then they will determine then by that time about the population and if it is warranted to run another program again like we did the years before, they will let us know and then they're conduct, they usually conduct those aerials the last week in November or the first week or second week in December. So right now, we're just in limbo and waiting until, and I just thought the other day, I said, boy, this is really working. I haven't seen a lot of deer, but I've come across the street, there was a little fawn laying on the side of the street, and I'm like, well, I guess we're not done yet. So that's where we are with the Deer Management Committee.
Great, thank you. Jay, any update from the city administrator?
Sure. I'll just share a couple of quick things. The city budget, as we all know, is in process. The department heads had a deadline of this past week to get those to our finance department. They then go through them all and then Carrie and her team and I meet with the department heads, respective department heads, and review their budgets in detail, and then again, continue to prep them to bring them back before you. So between now and then, if you have any burning questions or things that you want to talk to me in more detail about, don't hesitate to do that. I will share with you the conversation that we had at the last council meeting regarding the implementation of the comp plan. We, we are moving forward with that with, as Alderman Allen's recommendation, to put a two-year plan in the budget with a lump sum amount so that the council had a chance to see, see both of those. That was the directive that the department heads were given. And then one more compensation, I thought that was a really healthy conversation that the council had and the department heads were able to, most of them were here and were able to witness it firsthand. We also are moving forward with a PTO recommendation from that plan. We've been exploring paid time off for the last few years, even before the, the plan went in place and when the plan recommended implementing PTO, we took it a little more seriously and we, we will have a proposal that's come, to come before you on September 9th. So it's something that, again, will be a benefit for not only existing employees, but a really important recruitment tool for the city of West Bend to put us in a better position regarding time off that employees can prospectively see. Currently, if you go out on our website and look under benefits, encourage you all to do so, you'll see after one year of employment, you earn a week of vacation. And we're just not simply competitive anymore with that kind of a personnel policy. And so moving towards paid time off positions us well for that. And we met with the department heads and are continuing to meet with their respective teams to provide more information so that employees know what's going on as well. Thanks.
Any questions for Jay? Thank you very much. Any alderperson updates? Anybody? Alderman Butchlick?
Yep. The summer season is starting to wind down. Regner Park season and the inflatable zone has had their last day on Sunday. So right now, Regner Park does not, has basically closed down their, their swimming pool area. The Regner Park Coast Field hosted the Land O Lakes Baseball Grand Championships, and I, I went to the website from Land O Lakes and they were just thanking us, West Bend Baseball Association, West Bend, what a wonderful time they had here, even though they had a few rain delays for a while, but they said it was, it was a great, great weekend for them. The championship was done by Waterford Rivermen and Quos Creek. That's not in my district, but Quos Creek at the same time ran a Land O Lakes Championship fast pitch game for women. And the women from South Milwaukee, Queen of Diamonds, was the 2024 champions there. So we really had a busy weekend out there. But this weekend is coming up. German Fest is going to be probably the last hurrah at Regner Park. It starts August 22nd through August 25th, Thursday through Sunday. Enjoy the beer and food and gummy night for all, all four nights. Should be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berquist?
Um, just to touch on a few things, District 3 doesn't have a lot of social places, you know, so you're not going to hear a lot of stuff like happening downtown and Regner Park and things like that. But my constituents want to remind us that they are watching what's going on in the district and especially the construction projects. I think I touched on it last time, but if anyone's driven down Main Street lately, they can see some pretty good backups and stuff like that. So again, the, the fact that people are watching and they're, they're being patient, but you know, patience runs thin when you're backed up in traffic. So again, just making sure that we're diligent in what we're doing and, and all that. Again, just constituents watching what we're doing, so we pass it on. Unless, of course, we want to have some sort of activity down at the dog park. That's about the only thing in District 3 that has a good place. But again, just wanted to pass on the information that, you know, there are still other things going on in District 3 and, you know, we want to be recognized.
Good. Alderman Sternig?
Well, not in my district. I use it to get to my, in front of my district every day. It was great to see Sand Drive reopen and the intersection at Sand and Decorre repaired. It was, it, it becomes a great, again, another north-south corridor for traffic in this city. Having that widened, the addition of sidewalks is making it much safer for everybody who uses that, whether it be car, bicycle, or leg. That's it.
Very good. Alderwoman Sizer?
I'll double up on Matt's comment. Sand Drive is beautiful and it's so nice to have it open. Constituents out in that subdivision are happy and it's great. Thanks to have it. Park and Rec is not on the agenda, but I'm just going to quickly say that they had a great meeting last week. We met at four o'clock and toured a number of the parks in town and parks that have recently been done, parks that need some renovation, some of the new projects. So I'll have a more detailed report in the future, but it was a great meeting, just to go around and actually see what's going on in the parks. Villa Park area is fantastic. The residents there are the ones who really make that a neighborhood park because they do so much of the work. So that's all I have.
Good. Alderman Sparts?
Weekend again, Quos Creek, I was out there for most of the day. It was, got a little wet in the afternoon, but the fields, the fields took it. Mike, we did the best we could. I think everybody had fun. It was, the people were great. We were busy in the concession stand, I know that. Appreciate everybody coming in and enjoying West Bend. Also, the east side, I think, is hanging in or, I mean, you're right, we don't have the big events in that, but we keep busy and see what happens this week.
Great, thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
Likewise, we don't have a lot of social places and things that going on up in the seventh, but I did make it down to the chalk art. That was outstanding. I thought it was really neat, so.
Alderman Zingsheim?
Villa Park ribbon cutting tomorrow night, six o'clock. So brand new.
Up at the, up at the park, up at the top of the hill.
Up at the park, new, new place that was put in, new park update. So Mike and I will be up there if anybody wants to come.
Cool, thank you. My wife and I had the pleasure of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor yesterday for Max Orr and Luke Krieger, two great West Bend young men, troop number 762. Max's Eagle Scout project was putting in some birdhouses at Sandy Knoll Park, County Park, Sandy Knoll Park, and Luke's was our city parkage run, removing some invasive species. And just like to recognize those two fine young men. That's all I have. We do have a couple of items appropriate for closed session tonight, so I need to, I'll read the recommended motion and then I'll entertain a, a motion here. So entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Our two topics for discussion tonight will be the future use of the existing fire station number one and the former UWWC campus building. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Second.
I heard Alderman Zingsheim and Alderwoman Sizer. This requires a roll call vote, so I will randomly call the roll. Alderwoman Sizer?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Zingsheim?
Aye.
We will now.
Do a motion on both?
Okay.
Or at least a vote on both.
Okay, as I read it, I'd said both properties. Is it okay to take a vote on, just take another vote if there needs to be?
Yeah, just take a separate vote.
Okay. So that was for the existing fire station property. Future use will be our discussion of that. This next one, I'll take a roll call vote on the former UWWC campus building.
Motion to approve, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I'll take that motion.
Second.
Alderman Zingsheim and a second by Alderman Sparts. Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Zingsheim?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer?
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.